Everyone, and welcome to the September 26th, 2022 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and make a brief emergency announcement. Should there be an emergency during the meeting, we ask you, you please leave the council chambers in an orderly manner. Upon exiting, make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hall and down the stairs. If that exit is blocked, please exit the chamber, make a left-hand turn, and then a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hallway and down the stairs. If there is an emergency, please do not use the elevators. If you need assistance, please ask and it will be provided to you. With that now, please stand and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Reverend Anthony Dickerson of Greater Mount Olive Church for the invocation.
I thank you tonight, God, for those of your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, our city council members. I give thanks for the way of service that they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this room tonight as a complex human beings, carrying burdens and carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together, O God, in peace and in love. Help us to trust you more, more than our fears, more than our wounds, even our accomplishments. May we lean on your everlasting arms tonight. It is in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. At this time, I'll call for a motion in a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is passed by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award a bid.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Presenting tonight would be Contract Specialist Michael Lowe. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening, council members, members of the public. I have one item for the award a bid and a few items for declaration of surplus. The item for award a bid is ITB 23-101, the Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles. The requisition was sent over from Salisbury Police Department. We were able to isolate pricing negotiated by the state on a Maryland state contract. The award expiration for the state, it runs until February of 2023, so pursuant to city charter, general policy of competitive bidding exceptions allows us to utilize contracts negotiated by the state. The vendor of the award will be Hertrick Fleet Services Incorporated out of Melford, Delaware, and the individual vehicle cost is $43,974 each, and the total amount on the award, $439,740, is isolated in that vehicles account for PD. So the department seeks, Department of Procurement seeks approval from the city council to approve the award to Hertrick in that amount. We also have declarations of surplus from Salisbury Police Department. We're seeking approval for, from city council. There's a various list of bicycles that have accumulated at PD, and the list is in your packet. Those bicycles will be donated to local charity. And then there is various lawn equipment, whether it's grass trimmers or pushmowers that have accumulated that we will sell by a public auction.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Questions or comments from the council?
Could I ask, when you donate the bicycles, what charities do you choose to donate them to?
They do have information here. Actually, I should do that for the last. I think you can, you know.
Yeah, there's a number of charities that we're working with and not limiting ourselves to any. We'll work with homeless shelters. We've already been in discussion with folks from Cold Weather Shelter, partnering with Parkside High School to have their students help fix up the bikes and then get those out into the community, also work, you know, young persons that need bicycles.
For years, we worked with the Wheelhouse when they existed, and they would fix up the bikes. So that's where Chief has briefed us on the Parkside High School plan to get the students engaged in the repairs.
Okay. But I think as long as there's an apparent need, we'll be happy to work with them.
Work with whoever.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Mr. Boda?
How long for delivery on the police vehicles?
So these are 2023 production. So Ford has kicked out all of 2022 production orders and are reallocating that production force in the factories to 2023 models. My understanding with these, and I can get a better answer and follow up with you directly, is these will go into production in February, so we're looking at spring to summer delivery, and that is assuming no supply chain hiccups with chips or any other modules. We still have one vehicle in the fleet that is awaiting the rear HVAC control. Vehicle's been delivered, the rear AC doesn't work, so whenever the module shows up at Ford, we take it up there, they put it in, and then that function will operate. So I don't have a direct answer to you, but what I'm being told is they will go into production in February and then late spring, early summer delivery.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Let's not hold our breath, though, for that. Remember the delivery on the last, the last set.
Yeah, but they were coming from Australia, that one group.
Yeah, yeah, the Caprices, yeah.
Okay. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award a bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. The bids, the award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3189.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory, Ms. Glanz.
Good evening, council. Resolution Number 3189, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Salisbury a quitclaim deed with respect to Victoria Park Drive. Whereas a certain road named Victoria Park Drive is located in the city of Salisbury and shown as a cul-de-sac on a plat entitled, corrected plat of the re-subdivision plat of parcel A, the lands of Land Holding LLC and Lot 1, Block Q, West Side Manor subdivision, the land of Balmar Properties LLC, made by Parker and Associates Incorporated, dated 10/11/17, and recorded among the plat records of Wycomico County, Maryland, in plat cabinet JBM #17 Folio 187. And whereas Victoria Park Drive was never conveyed to the city of Salisbury, and whereas a reconfigured Victoria Park Drive is shown on a plat entitled Final Subdivision Plat of Sassafras Meadows Phase 3, made by Parker and Associates Incorporated, dated 12/08/21, intended to be recorded among the plat's recorded records of Wycomico County contemporously with a deed referred to in this resolution, JM Holdings LLC, being the owner of lands on both sides of Victoria Park Drive as a result of a special warranty deed dated December 28, 2019, and recorded among the aforementioned land records in Lieber JBM #4573 Folio 85. And whereas, as part of the development as contemplated by the final Sassafras plat, the developer intends to convey the reconfigured Victoria Park Drive as shown on final Sassafras plat to the city. And whereas, the purpose of the quitclaim deed is to convey any of the city's, city's right title and interest in and to that portion of Victoria Park Drive cul-de-sac as shown on the final Sassafras plat to developer such that developer can develop the reconfigured Victoria Park Drive as a through street and upon completion. Title to the property described in the quitclaim deed will certainly lie with the developer, its successors, and its signs. And whereas, in accordance with the foregoing, the city determined it to be in the best interest of the citizens of the city to quitclaim that portion of Victoria Park Drive cul-de-sac as described in the quitclaim deed to developer to reconfigure the cul-de-sac as a through street. And whereas, by this resolution, the council hereby approves the quitclaim deed and hereby authorizes the mayor's execution thereof on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Glanz. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3189, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3189 is approved by a vote of five to zero. We have two public hearings tonight, and they will be presented by City Attorney Ashley I will call for a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2734.
Second.
Mrs. Gregory, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Beauchesne, please read the ordinance.
Thank you. Ordinance Number 2734, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Section 17.36.020 and 17.224.040 of the Salisbury City Code to permit town home or townhouse developments in general commercial districts. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading. Would you like me to read it in its entirety or just defer to the previous record?
Just refer to the previous record, please.
Sure.
Okay. At this time, is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic? What we're doing is, is there anybody who would like to speak on the second item, ordinance Number 2737? Anybody who would like to speak, please stand, and you'll be sworn in.
Stick your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay.
My name is Mark Spencer Cropper, 6200 Coastal Highway.
Is this for the first one or the second?
The second one.
I'll call, I'll call that one up in a minute. I will now open the public hearing on the first item, ordinance Number 2734, for the second reading. I'll ask once again, is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will now call the vote on ordinance Number 2734. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2734, please signify by sec, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2734 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance Number 2737 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
I think I heard Ms. Blake first.
She did.
Okay. And I think I heard Mr. Boda.
Yes, you did.
Yes, Mr. Boda.
I tried.
You got, we got you.
We were harmonizing.
We got you. That was an all-hands-on-deck, that one, so I appreciate it. Ms. Beauchesne, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 2737, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Section 17.212.030 of the Salisbury City Code to add animal hospitals to the category of uses permitted in shopping centers. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchesne. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this topic? Please state your name. Please state your name.
Mark Cropper, 6200 Coastal Highway, Suite 200, Ocean City, Maryland. I represent Banfield Pet Hospital that submitted this request for this text amendment, and more than anything, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I'll just reiterate for the record that in the general commercial district, veterinary hospitals are a special exception. Shopping centers are also a special exception, but veterinary hospitals aren't allowed as a permitted use in shopping centers. So this is merely to make that clear. My client has an interest in placing a Banfield Pet Hospital in your general commercial district, and this text amendment is required in order to do so. So, thank you.
Yeah, I just have one comment, just to make it clear that this is not overnight.
Not at all, Mr. President, and let me just say very quickly that Banfield concentrates predominantly on preventive care. Their typical hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Most importantly, what they are not is a boarding facility. They do not allow for any overnight boarding, and they also are not a 24-hour emergency care facility. So it is very much in keeping inconsistent with most of, well, really all the other uses allowed in a shopping center.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, hearing none?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2737 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2737 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2738 for the second reading.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake. Ms. Beauchesne.
Ordinance Number 27, hold on, make sure I got the right one, 2738 we're on, correct?
Correct.
Okay. An ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the city's general capital project fund budget to provide funds for the Waterside Parking Lot Project. As you mentioned, this is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council? I'm looking forward to this. I will make a comment. This is, this is good things continuing to happen, so. This time, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2738, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2738 for the second reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2739 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake and Ms. Jackson.
No.
No. Mrs. Gregory.
Good idea.
Sorry. Ms. Beauchesne.
Ordinance Number 2739, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to accept a donation in the amount of $9,500 from the Salisbury Skate Park Committee, Inc., and to add simultaneously approve a budget amendment to the grant fund budget to appropriate these funds for eligible expenses associated with the construction of Phase 2B of the Salisbury Skate Park. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments? I just have one comment. I would like to thank the Skate Park Committee. They always come up and assist in these projects, and it's very, very much appreciated, and it's being used very, very frequently, as I've stated before. At this time, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2739 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2739 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2740 for the second reading. Mrs. Gregory, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Beauchesne. Ms. Beauchesne.
Ordinance Number 2740, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the general capital projects fund budget to appropriate additional funds required for construction of the Street Skaping Division Circle Project. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
This is going to be great.
Sorry, Mr. Boda, could you just speak up just a little?
I said, this is going to be great, so I'm really excited to see this move forward.
As I am as well. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of 2740 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2740 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2741 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Beauchesne.
Ordinance Number 2741, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Chapter 2.04 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Ethics for the Purpose of Incorporating Amendments Enacted by the Maryland General Assembly. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Any questions or comments from the council?
I have a question.
Sure.
When it gets printed, will, will it have the whole section that's striked out, or will it just have the whole new section?
It will have the whole new section.
Okay.
Anything else? If I might just add that this corresponds with the state requirements that we, that we've been given, so this, this is, we are now in compliance with the state.
Correct, and again, to reiterate, the general counsel for the State Ethics Commission has approved or foresees no issues with the proposal here, and is expected for approval before the commission sometime in the month of November.
Thank you. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2741 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2741 for the second reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2742 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory, Ms. Beauchesne.
Ordinance Number 2742, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 Marina Fund Budget to appropriate additional funds required for fuel and emergency repairs. Whereas the city operates the Port of Salisbury Marina, and providing fuel and water is vital to its operations. And whereas the increase in fuel cost is not reflected in the current budget, and the Port of Salisbury is at risk of not being able to provide fuel to boaters. And whereas, separate and apart from the increase in fuel costs, a leak was discovered in the service providing water to the Port of Salisbury Marina, and emergency repairs were needed. And whereas, the Marina Fund Budget must be amended to provide for these unexpected expenses, and whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city of Salisbury. Now therefore be enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows: Section 1, the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2023 Marina Fund Budget is hereby amended as follows: A, increase the current surplus available revenue account, that is account number 60300-469810 by $20,000; B, increase the gasoline expense account, which is 47000-556204 by $10,000; and C, increase the repairs and maintenance expense account, 47000-534302 by $10,000.
Ms. Beauchesne, questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2742 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2742 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2743 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Beauchesne.
Sure. Ordinance Number 2743, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Local Behavioral Health Authority for the purpose of accepting community mental health services, COVID relief block grant funds, and the amount of $45,244, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the homeless services case specialist position. Whereas, critical time intervention, CTI, is a time-limited, evidence-based practice model designed to mobilize support for vulnerable individuals during periods of transition, including individuals transitioning from homelessness to permanent supportive housing. And whereas, the Wycomico County Health Department received funding from the Behavioral Health Administration for block grants for community mental health services, COVID relief, specific to the, to the delivery of CTI services. And whereas, the Wycomico County Local Behavioral Health Authority has awarded the city a block grant for community mental health services in the amount of $45,224, which is the CTI funds. And whereas, the city's homeless services case specialist position will use CTI principles to assist individuals who are transitioning from homelessness to permanent supportive housing. And whereas, a permissible use of the CTI funds is to partially cover the salary cost of the homeless services case specialist. And whereas, in order to accept the CTI funds, the city must enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County LBHA to define the permitted expenditure and conditions related thereto of the CTI funds. And whereas, Section 7, point, or 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city, and whereas the appropriations necessary to enact the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city. So Section 1, Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a MOU with the Wycomico County LBHA, which stands for the Local Behavioral Health Authority, on behalf of the city for the city's acceptance of the grant funds in the amount of $45,224. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget be and hereby is amended as follows: Increase MHBG SAMSHA revenue account number 10530-425651-XXXX by $45,224, and increase salaries non-clerical expense account number 10530-501002-XXXX by the same amount, which is $45,224.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Just one comment. I think this is a, I think one of the key program that we need, and it's certainly going to assist, because as we know, the, the housing that we've come up with is temporary housing, and we're looking to make sure these people have all the resources they need to find work and become part of our city. So, it's great. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2743 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2743 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Beauchesne.
Thank you.
That concludes the items on the agenda. Ms. English, do we have any requests to speak from the audience? In that case, we'll go to administration remarks. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you, and thanks for a really critical meeting, a lot of good work done tonight. Want to commend the council for that. So just two things I want to bring your attention to. One, we, as you know, we host interns in the mayor's office, and, you know, One, we, as you know, we host interns in the mayor's office, and, you know, those interns take their work for the city seriously, and their, their work for the citizens seriously, but not always so seriously that they show up to the city council meeting. So I just want to say thank you, Tommy, for showing up to our, our city council meeting. Tommy?
Who is?
By the way, a UMES student, sociology and criminal justice, sociology major, criminal justice minor, is that right? So, going to come back to the city, I'm sure, and work with us after graduation. And second, want to remind you all about Stam Slam, which is what we're calling the groundbreaking of Phase III of the skate park. Debbie Stam, as you know, who worked for the City of Salisbury for 30 years in various roles, worked so hard with the Skate Park Committee to raise the money through CDBG and through the community to build that skate park. And it's really become a really important asset, not only in the context of our park system, but for kids all over Salisbury. So, want to encourage you to come out, that's tomorrow night at 5, right? 5 o'clock. We'll see you at the skate park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council remarks. Mr. Boda.
Hey, I'm in an undisclosed location in Fruitland, Maryland. But a lot going on at work today, so weren't able to get away. However, just out and about the past couple of weeks, beautiful weather, and great people, and talked to a lot of people trying to address some issues in the city as I've been out. So, I know Julie and they were getting some emails from me, so thank you all for your attention to this. Other than that's all I got. I see DeShawn was in the back real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson.
As I will reiterate about the scooters, numerous times I won't stop until I see it subside. With the underage riders is terrible. I have addressed some parents, I have addressed some of the young people that I've seen riding them, but it hasn't stopped. And like I said last, week before last, parents, guardians, whoever are getting these scooters for these underage children, remember, if something happens to them, the blood is on your hands. You can't blame the city, you cannot blame anybody else. You are responsible for these young people, and you must remember that. I also want to send some condolences to the Latoya Joines family, who lost her 15-year-old son, and not by violence. He just went to wake him up, and he was deceased. So, the City of Salisbury gives you our deepest condolences, Latoya. I especially. And I just want everybody to remember that COVID is still here. So be safe, keep yourself safe, get your boosters, then the other boosters come out. Jack said the county has it, so register with the county, call them, make an appointment, get that booster. You need it. Thank you.
Thank you, April. Ms. Blake?
Just two, two things. I just want to acknowledge a letter that I think I got one. Seems like everyone has received one from Tony Sarbanes, 1108 Granby's Run here in Salisbury, addressing concerns over the Shoemaker Pond. So I just want to acknowledge that we did receive the letter, and that I want to yield to President Heath about how we're going to address this, or did you want to do a work session on this? But I just want to acknowledge that the council actually has, has received this letter of concern from him.
And I can sort of answer that now.
Okay.
I'm aware that the city has committed to a portion to match whatever the county, correct?
Well, I can give more detail.
Oh, more detail.
Sure.
Go ahead.
You know, we, the city has met with the representatives of Granby's Run and Mallard Landing, has made clear that everyone agrees that we will participate, so long as the HOAs participate, or the HOA and Neighborhood Association participate. And they've agreed, the representatives of each agreed. So the only entity that refused to participate was the county. So it's, it's a dead issue. It's dead, until the county changes their tune. So Mr. Sarbanes was advised that his very effective lobbying prowess should be applied to those who have refused. And we gave him the phone number, email address, and mailing address for county council members and the county executive. Unfortunately, you know, he continues to lobby the city, but we already agree. We're already there, we're already at the table, we all agree. So that, that very effective messaging should be applied to those who refuse to participate. And I would use this forum to again encourage him to, to do exactly that.
The, actually, he is, he, the letter is addressed to multiple people.
I'm aware. I've got it too.
Right. And the, okay, and the Wycomico County Executive is on there, too.
I just hope it's, you know, the messaging is oriented on the people who are refusing to help.
Yes. Okay. And for the second time, since I've been healthy enough recently, I've been able to give blood on Saturday. The Easton Shore remains extremely low. Please, if you are healthy enough, donate blood. Your pint of blood saves three or more lives, so please donate blood.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory?
Just want to reiterate that there is a new booster out, please go get it, if you're able. And also, coming up on October 8th, I know that's a couple of weeks out, but I want to get that out there. The Pride Cross, Crosswalk Repainting is going on at noon on the 8th, so it's always a lot of fun. There's always a lot of folks out there participating in sprucing it up, and I hope to see you guys out there.
I, too, want to reiterate what Angela said about the blood situation. Please, please, it's, you know, it's almost, I think we've been talking about this since beginning of COVID, and it hasn't gotten any better. Matter of fact, in some cases, it's gotten worse. So please, if you can, if you are able, please give blood. With that, since there are no other items on the agenda, and everyone has spoken, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good week.